Yeah, exactly. Yeah, Stan Loonback thing is my ass.
Okay. Let's call this meeting to order then, because we've got a minutes from reports received and filed?
None.
None? Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings, events?
Hold on, I'm muting my computer. I heard yours going off there, so I can mute mine. What do we got? Got Coal County, I don't know, Board of Realtors perk meeting this afternoon. Got prayer breakfast meeting at noon. Got Board of Directors for the Realtors tomorrow, Campo tomorrow. Coal County Extension, South African visit with a bunch of dignitaries tomorrow. Not sure why they invited me. Be pretty cool.
Yeah. Can't say no, huh?
No. Chamber of Connections Thursday.
Hope you make all that stuff. I don't have anything.
Really?
Nope.
Oh.
Or I'm not going, so.
I got Cap Region Board meeting tonight, Home Savings Board meeting tomorrow. Living Windows meeting at 8:00 AM, but then 8:30 we've got the courthouse breakfast. Cap Region Medical Center Marketing Meeting, 3:00, 6:00 PM tomorrow night, Coal County Republican Club.
Is that Wednesday night or Thursday night?
Thursday night for the Coal County Republican Club. Your mother called me.
I know, she told me.
She likes me better.
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Well, she bugs in, huh?
Bids and contracts. Approval and signing of county website contract?
This is a contract with Civic Plus that we approved. It's the base bid and then the addition of the mobile app. Jill's looked over and approved it, and there's two originals there to be signed.
What was that other thing y'all met with last week that?
Civic ready.
I just got the quote back yesterday.
So do we have to wait to include it with this? Are they gonna honor some kind of price?
It can be retrofit if you decide to go that route.
Okay. I think we need to go ahead and keep moving with this. I don't know, is there any reason not to move on with it? We already basically approved it.
We approved it.
Contract, right?
We approved the award, we approved everything, this is just the contract yet.
And did we ever figure out how we were, we were gonna pay for part of it in this year?
I think Christie finds out.
On her? Well, if we get the grant, great, but if we don't get the grant?
Yeah, we did find out. Do you remember what it was? It was something like pay?
Pay half of it down and then half of it on completion. So part of it would be this year and part of it would be next.
Sure, which grant was that?
That was the one that Christie applied for.
It was the kickoff and then at a percentage of the completion. But the way we're looking, they said four to six months, there's no guarantee. You know, it's most likely gonna be next year.
Yeah, Christie was applying for a grant, but we don't know that we'll get it, which would include, could pay for all of it, but, um, is that correct? I mean, is that what I remember?
Yeah.
She's applying for the full amount.
Right. But whether we get it or not is another deal. Okay. So this is for the original contract and the app. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'm okay with it.
I make a motion, we sign the county website contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That doesn't include the civic ready.
No.
No.
Nope.
Approval.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Part of the, this whole process is that there's a training for 12 people. And right now, we have like no place for like a full-time training room. And we certainly don't have the equipment to do it. So do we wanna go to look at some like permanent training PCs or? You know, I had no clue how many we're gonna need.
We've got laptops.
Well, we don't really have, I mean.
You can use mine.
We, I don't know how many we're gonna need. I don't know, we're gonna be 12 people at one time, or if we're gonna do three people, or you know, whatever. I don't know, but.
We did the training for BSA over at Sheriff's Office.
Right, there was four, we had four machines we could do it. And that will work as long as we have four people. You know, I don't know what the.
Be educated that it wouldn't be 12 people sitting there the entire. I think we can stagger it and be okay, but I still don't know what we have as far as.
Okay, I don't know, I'm just saying it might be something we'll have to touch base on and work it later on.
We need to pull some laptops for you. Just let me know, you're more than welcome to use mine.
Okay.
I don't know, speaking for myself, but we got three of them up here. There's one. If we need to pull them up and do it in here, we can sit around and do a lot of it in here.
Okay.
It's not a permanent training room.
I hope not.
Greg finds a permanent training room, too.
Sure.
Sure.
Which way do you want to expand?
Okay. Approval and signing of 2015-21 access control.
This is the contract with all systems you guys awarded, and it is with the hourly rate as needed if needed, instead of the maintenance contract.
We already approved that, right? We just have the contract now again, too? Okay. So we agreed on, I'm fine with that.
I move we approve and sign the contract with all systems for the access control.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Debbie, there's the website one.
Approval and signing of the food service extension.
This is ABL management for the food service over at the law enforcement center. Sheriff White satisfied with their service and they had no increase. So this is just the extension of the original contract that was bid last year.
I move we approve and sign the food service extension one contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Natural gas.
I sent you guys what I had put together, you should have the attachment. And then I also sent you what Gray told me, he'd probably be the best person to talk to, so.
Looking at it today, been watching what the gas market's been doing. It's actually dropped another four cents today again. Fifty-two week low was 258.9, and today it was at 268.9 for natural gas. If we were locking in today, our cost would be $3.38 for Decatherm, I believe. And from looking at it, looking at last year, my recommendation is we lock our price in from November 1st through end of March and do a 90% hedge on what we buy.
What was the last year that we did?
Last year.
Did we lock it in the whole year, or what did we?
We locked it in the whole year for $4.7344.
Okay.
So basically, it'd be about a dollar or something, a dollar forty difference from last year to this year if we did it that way. And then let the market flow.
Doing it that way?
Yeah.
Well, what Jennifer says is that we didn't really save that much by hedging last year.
Well, last year we paid more because.
Because we locked it in for the full year.
And it was higher, right?
Yeah, and then it dropped off when the market crashed with all the oil and everything else.
But we paid, we paid more if we wouldn't have locked it in, but we actually paid less than what we were paying before.
Right.
With hammer.
Doing it.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah.
We still saved money, but not as much as we could've.
Chance you take locking it in.
My recommendation is we lock it in from November 1st to March, and that's it. And then see where the market is after that, and not lock it in for the full year.
Will they allow us to do that?
I'm talking with Jeff, yes.
Okay. So it'd be 90% of our, uh, usage?
Average usage for the year, yeah, for the, for each month.
For each month?
Yeah.
But what about, does that? I don't know when ESB came online. Is that taking them out of the equation, or?
Yeah, well, let's see, well, they went through the winter. They went through the winter. They should, there should be some usage there for it. Because it was August of last year when we finished up that project.
And then what about printer?
Printer's gonna be dropping off, but I'm not sure how much is gonna be dropping off. And that may not even make the minimum usage for this contract.
So I guess I'm okay with hedging everybody but printer. And just, just, I don't know if we have to do them, or what, or, or just take their usage down to zero?
First, whatever that we can, yeah. We got a usage from like April through October that we can roughly use. Because that's about what they're gonna be using anyways, because water heaters and kitchen stoves is about all they're gonna have.
And that project will be done when?
Uh, it should be starting the end of September. Should be winding up middle of November at the latest, or November, yeah.
Okay. I'm good with the recommendation, just as long as we, you know, back out printer usage or adjust it.
Right.
By more than the 90, 90%.
Yeah, we're gonna ju, well, just what we used April through, April through November.
It don't matter to me, I would, the hedging is, I think, is just a chance we're taking, and a chance we can save money. But if we, if we don't do it, we just go with the price, it could drop, and we could technically be better off that way.
Right.
I don't play the stock market.
No, we're just rolling the dice, but.
We're gonna save no matter what we do.
But you could save more if you don't hedge the price.
Yeah, and if the winter's rough, then we, it could go up to.
Right, so, so with a mild winter last year, we're hedging 90% of what we used last year. Last year was fairly mild. We get a long, hard, cold winter, we're gonna use a whole lot more than what we used last year. And so we'll save on the 90% we hedged, and then we pay market on everything over that 90%, so. Yeah, I don't think they know. Larry, what do you say?
What do you think?
Sunny and 40, all winter.
I'll take that myself.
Yeah. I want lots of snow, so.
I know you do.
Yeah, so.
I don't either.
Yeah, I'm fine with, with the hedge. Like I said, I'd be fine either way with it, hedging or just going with the price. So if we wanna try the hedging again, and maybe this year.
We have to save some money. I mean, if saved.
Last year, we locked in full rate, right? Or was there a hedge? I don't, I wasn't part of it.
We hedged 80, 80%.
You did 80%.
So. So I move we award and sign the contract with Constellation for 90% hedge from November through April.
Second.
April or March?
End of March, which is April 1st.
Okay.
3/31 then, through 3/31.
Somewhere around there, yeah.
So November 1 through 3/31.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
2015-31 toner.
Okay, you guys should have an attachment in front of you. This is kind of one of those things you can get done at the leads pretty quick. If you look at the very first tab, that's all of them, I think there was 13 bidders from New Jersey to Colorado. In the bid documents, it said that we need to be able to have same-day delivery if needed. So that was easy to knock out a few. From there, just to kind of narrow it down, I looked at the ones, as long as they had either an alternate or an OEM in all the categories, I considered those the best bids. That came to three, that's on the last tab. If you look at them, it's really just kind of wash. They're really very close. My recommendation would just be to award it to the lowest and best, and then kind of have Melody maybe give this Cartridge Solutions a chance, see if they do good. But those are remanufactured. The ones we've been using, the trend, we've had minimal problems with them. You can get some really junky ones in there. So I think that we just kind of wanna leave those options open. That's my recommendation, is the lowest and best in each category, and kind of let Melody determine what that is.
Thought we, Dale left. Thought we had a lot of problems with that. Some of those re-referved.
I don't, have we ever used a remanufactured?
I thought we tried it one time or something.
There's ones that just fill the ink, and then there's ones that, and I have an email from him explaining exactly what they do somewhere. But anyway, basically, they go through, they replace a few components, clean it, and then refill it.
Okay.
So that opposed to just refilling it. That said, they're not brand new, the compatibles are.
I know we've done the refill, but I don't think we've ever done the recomponent type ones. Some vendors may say that, that, you know, I mean, his wording is so different.
I know. He's been in business since 1990. I mean, I don't know much about him other than that, but.
Which one is that?
Cartridge Solutions.
I'm on that last 12, okay.
Which one are you on?
Once again, I don't know where I am. I was on the last sheet.
Yeah, that's the one that's narrowed down to the three, right? Cartridge Solutions, same company first.
Okay, so we would go off of that sheet, lowest, best available?
That's my opinion, yeah.
Okay. I was going between the tabs, I got myself confused, I'm sorry. Where's this one at?
So you're on sheet one, and you're showing, are you taking the yield? And then figuring the price off the yield, or?
Yeah, the part of the usage, and then the price based on the yield. So if there is different yields, it's adjusted for that on the final price. You should be able to click in the formula to make sure, to double check that, but that's how I did it, yes.
Okay. And so do we have any way to, to keep track of if we're actually getting that yield?
I don't think so, I mean.
So.
Jeffrey, you gotta sit there and calculate. That is.
I mean, but we do have counters on a lot of the, I mean, is that on a lot of the bigger ones, or?
Well, a lot of the multi-functional too, Chris, I think that are under the contracts to where the companies come and do the toners anyway. So it wouldn't apply to ones like that, it would be more like the smaller, you know, not the super, super high volume.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I just, so it's really subjective. I mean, if you're taking the lowest price based on the yield, and I tell you that, well, I'm gonna get 12,000 copies out of my toner, and, and so my price becomes a whole lot cheaper, and I only get six, and so my price is double.
Yeah, I mean, I would think it'd be fairly accurate, and those are published numbers, it's not something that someone just, you know, threw on here for the bid. But yeah, you do have a good point, and that's true.
I'm okay with awarding it as recommended. So I move that we award, we got a contract to sign, too? Nope. Okay, so I move we award to lowest and best in a available category.
A second.
And Jill, since we're not committing to a certain amount, we're not gonna do a contract on this one, right?
Yeah, fine, unless you wanna lock in. I assume the price though, if they don't give us the price they said. Yeah, exactly. Just use purchase orders.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't need it.
Okay. We got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any unfinished business?
And we had, what were we talking about last week? The moving wall.
Moving wall.
Yeah, did anybody have any thoughts on that?
I don't know, are you gonna put it under economic development, or, because it's not under our welfare line? Because that would be contracting with somebody to provide some services that we don't provide. And I don't see it as that.
Yeah, that's, that would be the only place that I think that we could put it if we did something, would be under ED.
If we do this one, we're gonna be hit up for everyone that comes through or is doing anything in Coal County. So I don't know if it's a precedent, we wanna settle with it. I'm not disagreeing with what it is. We may even be up there for one day helping read it, it's like a four-day reading.
Yeah, Lions Club's up there reading it one day.
We got Eastside Business Association's part of it, and maybe our Coal County communities has brought it up, too, so.
Um, I mean, we would did the, so last year we did the hot bike tour. And I thought it was kind of a neat thing. I mean, I don't, I don't think we did anything for the Shelby Fest, did we? So.
I don't think so.
I think, I mean, I think a lot of those things have some, some valid, you know, economic development draws. Bringing people to our community, putting heads in beds. You know, something for people to, to do and see, but, I mean, I see your point, but on the other hand, I'm okay with telling people no, too. So, you know, I don't, I just don't see setting a precedence as a, as something where you just can't say no. So, but.
I think they come through about maybe, what, every five years, maybe, or so? It's been here before, but it's been a while. Is it the Veterans Council that's bringing it in, or who?
Uh, I don't recall. Okay, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Jefferson City Veterans Council.
Who is it?
Jefferson City Veterans Council, which is.
Which is.
Your VFWs, your American Legions, your.
They're all not-for-profit agencies?
Mm-hmm.
Because that's what kind of the other things are, we contact with not-for-profit agencies, so that would be the other thing. I think it makes a positive impact on the community. I don't know how much economic development it provides, how many heads in beds we have, I don't have any numbers on that. I'm just.
Right.
That's why I'm throwing up in the air, I don't have a whole lot of information on it, but.
I, I get it.
It's a good community. Thing is good to support the, our veterans that gave the open price.
I mean, I think $2,500 is a little steep. I mean, I'm comfortable at $1,000. We could give $1,000 to the Veterans Council for the moving wall, but.
Yeah, I would second that, if you want to make a motion.
Okay. So I move that we spend economic development funds at $1,000 for the Jefferson City Veterans Council for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Moving Wall.
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I want to go put a little contract, and then we'll have it at the next agenda.
Okay.
What did we still have in our ED? I guess.
We got quite a bit in there.
Okay. I was thinking we still had some that we hadn't used from '15, since we made that a line, didn't we make that a line item this year?
Mm-hmm.
Got it all in one, yes. The ones that went on profit, all considered economic instead of through general welfare.
We had some under, yeah, we had some through the general public welfare and some through ED.
Right.
Used to all be under the same, but.
Since it's maybe a one-time deal, we won't do it again, probably, Chris, so Danielle would enter another account now, or just put it under ED.
That's fine.
I'll check with the motions back.
Yeah, I wouldn't make a line for it, because it's not an every-year thing.
No. Okay. Any other unfinished business? New business, accounts payable review.
Yeah, I asked for approval of accounts payable. Jeff, yours is in there this time, so.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Epstein.
Discussion of tax levy for 2015.
Okay, well, you guys see your attachment there? As far as, it starts out with assess valuation after Board of E, and that's where it all begins with the tax levy. And then it's turned into the state auditor's office, and they come back with our ceilings. And that's the next reports you see under there. The ceiling for GR is .3364 cents, and the ceiling for Roden Bridge is .2706. And it goes through all those calculations. And because of the EMS sales tax, we have a rollback of 60%, which then the next sheet is all about the calculations for the sales tax rollback, rollback. Once you do that.
What page are you on? I see, page 30. Okay, I got the 3364, 56, 350, whole bunch of numbers from.
State auditor.
Yeah, state auditor.
Yeah, keep going past that, past that.
Okay, I see something that looks like that there.
It should be one dated 2014 and one 2015.
What, do you know what page it is? I'm on page 16. It's got pretty colors like you got on that one. Flipping, yeah.
That's it. 2015, you're good.
Okay, thank you.
So this, what, it's calculated through the state statute. You have to go with the first six months of your sales tax for the current year, and you put that figure and you double it. Last year was the same thing on the 2014, put the first six months and you double it. But then in the formula, you have to take what you thought was gonna be here in 2014 versus what actually came in in 2014. And you have to add or subtract the difference to the tax levy in '15.
Is that new math or old math?
No, that's just something they came up with.
It's old math.
I'm all right with that.
I just wanna stress on that, because it really does affect our tax levy this year. Because it was, from the estimate based on the first six months of 2014 to what it actually came up with, we were $271,000 short.
271 short?
271,733.56 cents. So, and the way the tax levy rollback is designed.
We were short of our estimate.
We were short of our estimate, based on how they told us to estimate.
So we, we actually took in more than what we estimated?
That's right.
Okay.
And what, what you try to do at the end is your tax levy and your property tax need to balance. So yes, we got more revenue in taxes, so in turn, your tax levy will be reduced because of that. So you go down through the calculation here, and it's telling us through this calculation that because of the rollback, and because, maybe a little bit because we rolled back our tax levy last year at an even number a year as part of this, the tax levy for GR can only be set at the ceiling, can be set at the ceiling at 0752 is the ceiling for GR because of the rollback. Okay? I can answer more questions about that later, that's why. And I, I wanted to show you this next sheet, that's the third sheet past that. It's showing that our tax revenue has increased, so that's why that 273,000, we have received it, just in a different way, not in the tax levy. And then I gave you some what-ifs in GR. Basically, I'm recommending you stay at the ceiling, which is .0752. I don't know if you guys see this next sheet with the next. It actually is a reduction in GR by $320,000. Keep in mind, 271,000 of that, we received in additional taxes. So we're in a reduction of 48,632. And I contribute most of that to the volunteer rollback we did last year. So GR will be short going into '16 if everybody pays their property tax and they're all on time, which we know will never happen. It is gonna be short by 48,000. Okay? Recommending the ceiling there. And Public Works, their ceiling could actually go up .0006. So it can go up to .2706. Last year, you had it at .27. And to that effect, if you did that, it would mean an increase for Public Works for $56,740. Again, if everybody paid their taxes and paid on time, that fund would receive 56,000. So I'm recommending that, go to the ceiling on both of them. The next sheet is the notice that will go in. The next sheet is the notice that will go in the paper as of tomorrow. You guys decided last year just to go ahead and publish what the ceilings were compared to 2014 ceilings. So that's what's going in the paper. And again, the tax levy is set for the twenty-fifth of August at nine o'clock. Then we'll have a public hearing and, and then you'll set the levies. And behind there, I give you a history of the assessed valuation going back to nineteen ninety-five. And then on the next sheet is the history of the tax levy. And GR and Public Works, where it's been since nineteen ninety. So, and then a synopsis of the rollback, of how that is handled. So there's no action today. I just want you guys to have that information and explain how we got to that. Again, you'll have time to talk about it, think about it before the twenty-fifth. I'll answer any questions if you have any questions.
The gist of all that is that in GR, the taxes will be rolled back again from last year at point ten cents to point oh-seven-five-two seven-point-five cents roughly.
Yes.
Once again, reducing property taxes for Coal County. I'm good with it.
Alright.
We just gotta get Larry to collect all those taxes.
Yeah, Larry. That's just the westbound on damn roads.
You need to check with the other Larry to make sure they paid their taxes before you take care of their road.
You're just advertising it for now. We're not deciding anything.
That's right.
Right, that's correct.
No, we have to have it advertised. Just like you'll see all the school districts out there, you'll see the library out there, you'll see everybody. Because they all have to have a seven-day notice of their public hearing. And I'm not sure, you know, yes, the county is rolling back theirs and it's saving on those dollars for the taxpayer. It all depends on what the other taxing jurisdictions do, too. If you guys set it at the ceiling, yes.
But I mean, so it, it really drives home the point that as our sales tax continues to go up and we increase our revenues on our sales tax, we're not really taking in any more money because we're rolling back the other taxes and so we're really living within our means. You know, it's, um, so I think, you know, I think everybody needs to realize that, that we're not increasing our revenues.
Yeah, the newspaper needs to make sure they get that in there.
And that's why those long, that's why those long.
You guys are broadcasting.
That's right.
That's why this long formula for the calculation is to make sure that the, the balance stays even between your, um, tax levy and your sales tax.
For the emergency medical services, doesn't have anything to do with the Public Works one, we don't roll anything back on it.
No.
So if we raise that one, then we will be raising taxes.
Point oh-oh-oh-six.
That's still a raise.
Fifty-six thousand if everybody pays, or fifty-four thousand if everyone.
Point zero-zero-zero-six.
And a lot of that's due to new growth, you know, that, that's due to new growth in, in this, um, and we have to supply services for all that new growth that's happened within this county. So, you know, you can look, that's what it's designed for, too. The counties do get to take part in that. Because it's growing, we have to supply more services to people, so. That's why the ceiling is, changes at some point. But again, that long formula does equal out general fund levy.
I get what you're saying on that. I mean, in the Road and Bridge Fund, you know, it, it does increase it slightly, but, you know, we've, uh, I mean, I thought ten cents was low. Now we're going to seven and a half cents. And, uh, or that's, that's the highest we can go. So. You know, we can't, we can't keep maintaining the roads for the same price year after year when our, when our costs keep going up. And we, we're adding more road miles. So, anyway.
And if you look at the history of their, the tax levy, we were at some points thirty-seven, thirty-seven cents, you know, back when. And before the EMS, you know, the rollback, it was thirty-three-point-five-five. So we've come down to seven-point-five-two, so. It's good.
A cent's worth almost.
Okay. You guys okay with going to the paper with it? I guess we have to do that.
Oh, yeah. I want to probably put it in there. I think when you leave, that's why we've done it, I think.
We did it last year.
We put the ceiling in there. And if we go less, we go less, but we put it in there at the ceiling. We have the public hearing and anybody wants to say anything at that point. So.
Okay.
Alright, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Because whatever you put in the paper, they're going to perceive as reality. And if you put anything less, it's not going to look to go back.
Well, it is reality.
No.
Well, we, yeah, that would be the max that we could do.
I saw it on the internet.
We could do less.
Yeah, I don't believe everything you see there. Photo chopped.
Best if it's on your page, yeah.
If it involves fire, probably so is. But it was safe fire.
In-house budget discussion, Finance Director.
Okay, well, I know, um, there's still other people here. I know you guys decided last week or when I was on vacation that the department heads can actually bypass and turn their budget into the auditor now, which is fine. Gives them a little bit more time to do that. I think you guys did say if there was any major changes in the budget, if you'd like to know about it from your department heads, either now or at least before you, they submit it to the auditor. If not, um, we can go over just the few budgets that you guys are responsible for, but I didn't know if anybody else had any other budget items they wanted to talk about that they are working on.
I've got a lot. They say that this could be my worst year. We're, basically what we're running into is all of our servers that we have in place are coming to the end of their warranties primarily. So next year, every, all the three-year warranties and stuff that we bought, when we bought the servers new are expiring. So we're going to have to continue on or replace the servers with, and the maintenance is usually around eight-hundred dollars a year. But, giving example, the recorder that had a server that's probably two years old and the motherboard failed, I mean, it just died. So without warranty, you don't go buy one of those. Those are provided, you, you get those from HP. So you have, you need to have that service to, to have that contingency covered. It's an insurance policy. Something else we're looking at, we, and we brought this up before, all of our phone, so, or, not all of our phone system, half of our phone system is reaching end-of-life next year. And there are six devices and I'm working with CenturyLink trying to get quotes for them right now. Right now it's looking around twenty thousand, but that's not taking everything into consideration. And the last big ticket thing that Rich and I are looking at is a new way to back up all of the servers in the county without using tape. It's just going to be disk to disk. And then, uh, it's, we're going, we were able to, like, back up the courthouse, but we can store a copy of that at one of our other sites like EMS or somewhere. We can put another device and then we have multiple copies of backup. So each, each site would be backed up or have at least two different places that it has the backup. And it's all done. There's no tapes involved with it. We have a lot of problems now where, you know, tapes don't get changed or they break or they don't, whatever. We lose a lot of backups because of, you know, human failure or mechanical failure. So we're looking at that and we're trying to get some reasonable numbers on that, but it's not cheap. But our, our big thing here is probably going to be thirty thousand dollars. And the rest of the sites will be smaller, but there'll be some, some lesser amount. So it could be up to maybe fifty thousand if we get everything together. And not saying we're going to do all of it, but I'm just, we're just trying to get a plan put together, but. So my, my budget is going to be fairly significant, which I normally try to hold off on. This is not a going, it's not going to include any new PCs that I've seen so far. Nobody's really, I put out the thing for everybody to submit something. And the only thing I got was a couple of, uh, health wants some monitors. Well, that's okay. But I don't know, I haven't heard anything at this point from many other departments, so that's, that could still happen, you know, before the end of the month, so. But I just want to give a heads up. We're just going to have to, you know, lose the numbers or whatever, I don't know. I don't normally try to submit anything big. But this could be a year that we're going, a lot of things have gone to happen, so. Twenty sixteen has got a lot of expirations and stuff, so.
But then we're good for.
Oh, yeah, well, however long, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's the thing. Normally you put these things, you buy three, everything we buy has a three-year warranty and you think, well, three years is a long time. And next thing you know, you look up and it's three years. And you, you suddenly had to take care of it, so that's kind of where we're at.
When you're talking about phones, are you talking about the phone?
No, it's, uh, actually the communication part that ties all the buildings and stuff together. It's really Cisco, well, it's the, it, it's, it's nothing to do with the phones. I'm afraid at some point the phones, Cisco's going to say, these are old and we're not going to support them anymore. But right now I can buy a refurbished phone for seventy-five dollars, so that's, that's not a showstopper.
You can have my phone?
How long have we had this?
Uh, it's going to be, we got a minute, we really went live in two thousand, end of two thousand and seven or first of two thousand and eight. So the phones have been, when the sheriff went across the street, was about the time that they changed the model from this particular one to the next model. And they've been supporting this, which is good, but at some point they decided that they don't want to. We're out two, two-hundred-plus phones, so. There's lots of big numbers if we change anything totally. And that's why you try not to do anything one time. You just try to, you know, do it a little bit at a time. But the, the six items I'm talking about is the end-of-life, Cisco says, even if it breaks, we're not going to fix it. And so we have to, have to move on. So I'm waiting, trying to convince CenturyLink to give me some numbers and they're not very timely on their response, so right now we're waiting on that.
You can unhook my phone.
You know, I get a lot of that. A lot of people say they don't care if their phones work or not.
I'm serious. Just tie it to my computer. If they leave a message, I can check it on my computer. I, I don't use my phone. The only thing it might be used for is a anchor weight or something.
Unfortunately, since we went to the PRI system, the phone line charges are, that's not the problem. It's all this communication is the expensive part behind it. We don't pay per line. We do for certain lines, you know, fax machines or certain, not even fax. I forget, redundant lines or whatever you want to call them, so.
But, uh, I mean, I think the system works good. I mean, we have our, you know, twos and pros on it, but it's, uh, you know, I don't know, I get, Rich asks me all the time if we ever made our money back. I have no idea, but, you know, it's, uh, I wouldn't want to go through the process of changing again just for the sake of doing it because it was not a fun process. I'm sure it wouldn't, uh, it wouldn't be easy to say, if we had decided to do it again, so. But that's kind of where I'm at and I'm, I'm planning on the September first date. Is there some reason that that's not going to work? Okay, because I'm still, like I said, I'm still trying to get all these numbers together. It's, it's kind of painful. The one good thing is the four-hundred, AS four-hundred should be going away January twenty sixteen is what I was told by Dave Sevitt. The assessor is the last group on there and he's said right now he's putting a first go of his software. And it should be all buttoned up by January one. So I have not, the only thing that's been renewed has been the hardware because we haven't seen it run. You know, it can't do already and it'll be through next August, but I'm not doing any product, uh, maintenance or anything like that, so that's going to all drop off. And that'll be, you know, several thousand dollars, so. We've already saved about three thousand by not renewing some, some other things on it, so. That's going to be at least, at least a little buyback on that, so. But that's all I have. You guys got any questions?
I'm going to go back to the backup tapes. We still use tape to back up.
Absolutely. We got, I mean, remind you, I got five sets of tapes I have to change.
We've got iCloud and everything out there and we can't back it up somewhere else in space. That's not going to be destroyed by a fire or tornado. I don't, I guess I'm technologically challenged on this stuff, but it seems like if, I got a phone that gets destroyed, I can go get a new one, hook it up to my computer and I pull it out of space and it brings back all my pictures and songs and some of the stuff I don't know.
The problem with having everything in iCloud or whatever is anytime you lose, um, any kind of connection, then you're done. And that's my biggest fear with putting everything on the cloud. Health runs it today quite frequently. Their provider, um, is in California, whatever. So everything they do is on the net. If it goes down, they're done. I mean, their office is, they're, they can't do anything, so it's kind of a.
If iCloud goes down, I still have it on my phone. If my phone blows up, I still go back to iCloud.
And it was developed, well, our, our products, like the AS four-hundred, you can, it just isn't built to do a backup to the, you know, it's.
You know how I get when we talk about microfilm. I'm saying why we're talking about a physical tape that we have to take out to Public Works and store it out there, so that way if a tornado comes through here, we can go, still go out there and back everything up.
Same time, if you lost something yesterday, we just go put the tape in, here it is, and, you know.
All right, pull it from iCloud. I'll type it in. Oh, here we go, new computer, ready to go.
Yeah, it, it could be coming to that, but right now it's, we have, how many, we just did a calculation the other day. We have four terabytes. And I have no idea what backing up four terabytes on a, on a, we, we would have to buy internet connections that are some parallel to get that done every day. Uh, so that's kind of a, kind of a deal, too, so.
I would pay a pretty good monthly for that, what we have.
Oh, yeah, they wouldn't even come close to what we would need to be terabytes.
And not fitting, it's named after a dinosaur, terabytes.
Terabytes, yeah.
Alright, I'm just saying.
Not to say it won't ever happen, though, because it could, but right now it's, we're not positioned to really do that, so.
I don't know everything about the computers and stuff, but it's just the stuff we can do, it seems like we'd be able to do that.
This product we're looking at is actually similar to that, except we own, uh, I mean, the box that's here. But it is, you're backing everything up to a, um, just to a device. And then as you do one big backup, then you just, whatever gets changed every day gets backed up. And then, uh, so those, those backups are a lot, obviously a lot faster than doing the first, the first one.
I didn't want to get down in a wage too far. I just, it's just weird that we can't do that.
And all that. So that's why we're trying to struggle with the cost, the best, best solution for the cost and, uh, see if we can get something really reasonable on it. But we would like to pursue it because tapes are, every time you change a generation of tapes, you know, if you have a big server, the tape won't back it up because it isn't big enough, that thing. So it's kind of an ongoing deal that you really don't want to keep into, you don't want, you know, you don't have to, so. Anyway, that's what I have. If you guys got anything else?
No, Dan, just submit that to us as you submit it to the auditor. Same with the other departments, just submit it to us.
Okay, well, I'll get it to you as soon as I, like I said, if I get the super numbers, I'll get it knocked out.
Okay. So then if you guys just want to go over the rest of the little departments that are under your control before they're submitted to the auditor, we can do that now. I think they're out there that I had scanned and sent you guys. The biggest ones that we'd be looking at is in general accounts, EMS sales tax and our capital sales tax. I just need a little guidance for what you want to be put in those categories to what is submitted to the auditor. Again, when the auditor gets done with it, the budget will come back to you guys and you guys will have, you can change it. And you can, you know, things will develop between, between now and when the budget is adopted. So it's up to you guys. You, um, if you want to go over each individual one of these, or.
Did you email those or are those attached?
They were attached to an email. And they should be attached out there as, on the, maybe not, on your agenda.
They weren't attached on the agenda, but you did email them.
And I could show you how to get in the BSNA and you guys can work on this as you go and look at that.
You'll get with her, huh? Yeah, I'll bet you will.
I will.
It's under the general.
Budget for two thousand and sixteen, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, I'm going to need my readers.
So.
It's better to look up here, maybe.
No, because when you go flying around now.
No, I don't go flying around anymore. I don't.
I spin in circles.
Okay, how, how, where are you at, Debbie?
Yeah, yeah, you'll probably have an update out there. I don't know if you guys have.
I, well, I have.
You've updated before.
Um, so, show me where you're at and how you're getting there.
It's in general ledger. It's in general ledger, so that application for general ledger.
Oh, God, I'm so far behind already. Wait, it's not under AP, what are we under?
Uh, general ledger.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna open now, yeah, you will have to update.
General ledger.
Pedal sticks.
Go to your main screen. All right. See, I didn't want it in that there. Open that, general ledger.
Chris, is it making you update?
Uh, I already did it, so it shouldn't have to update, but I had to get back to general ledger. I gotta be able to type right.
Got my password, I didn't even remind you of that. Oh, yep, it's asking for update.
It doesn't really take that long.
Remember, you put S. Bushman in your password. You didn't tell me your passwords, I can't help you with that. The one that you used over there when we did the training, it's probably one, two, three, four.
Help.
That's your luggage.
Help, H E L P.
Same as your luggage.
You guys got it up a little bit? All right, so you just go to task up here and then if you go to create or edit a budget...
Mine's not, mine was updating and it's not.
It's not?
Okay. Do you want to allow the following program to make changes? I don't know.
Just say yes.
That sounds like, never mind, just say yes. Could be getting in trouble yet today. Today didn't start off good the way it is, I went out and get my newspaper and I thought it was just a little stick, I was leaning over a step over and all of a sudden it started moving, it was a big old night crawler. I don't know who was driving behind a white truck, but somebody got to see me do about it. Two second dance. I thought it was a snake, I thought I was gonna die.
Must've been a pretty big night crawler, you thought it was a snake.
It wasn't that big, but it don't take much anything that looks like a snake to make you jump.
Make you jump.
Oh, my goodness. I thought, hell, that's about like walking into a spider web, you wonder who's watching.
Yeah, I hate that too.
Okay, you guys go into create or edit a budget?
I'm still updating.
It's still?
Mm-hmm.
You've got to be a little more patient.
Sam's hiding them up here.
Are you in hurry?
Turn to Debbie here.
It's all right.
Oh, here you go Debbie, that's return to you.
Yeah.
Hey, Lynn, here's one, can you pass that to Lynn too? While we're doing that. Now it's configuring, how long does that take? It said ten seconds, time remaining for about a minute. Probably 'cause we're all on it right now. I gave that contract back to Debbie. The contract website one? Yeah, Sam gave it to me, he already signed it, I didn't get to sign it.
She didn't give it to you? I don't have that, she just...
All right. I'm opening general ledger back up.
All right, we got general ledger.
Oh, now I gotta log in again.
All right, you added?
The following applications are linked in your current shared database group, utility billing.
Yeah, just say...
Just hit okay, check the box and hit okay. I've read the warning, not ready to continue.
Yep.
Well, I don't know about that.
Yeah, I, yeah. All right, now you go to task.
Okay.
And then you go down to create or edit budget.
Okay.
And now you can select what you wanna work with, you can see it all, you don't have to see it all. I've actually, in department wise, I've selected, um, one twenty-seven. So what you do to select it is you just go down here and find it and you put it over there to use. Sorry, I'm not a trainer.
In department?
Yes, I will start with that one, 'cause...
You gotta move it over?
Yes.
Okay.
And then you say okay, and then again, we'll just, we're gonna look at all the accounts, all the projects, revenue and expense are one twenty-seven. So you hit okay?
Already did.
You did, you're way ahead.
Yep.
You said hit okay, so I did, I was trying to keep up.
So there you see the accounts, then the revenues are all in the fours, now you can look at the revenues, separate from the expense, but I did go ahead and put both on there. So whatever you wanna think about as we go through this. And again, you can see what we are allowed to see, the two thousand fourteen activity, the amended budget for fifteen, the activity year to date, um, for fifteen and the projection till the end of the year fifteen. And then you see the department's request. And again, this is your all's budget, I have put some figures in here, so again, we can change these. Um, as, as far as the revenue coming in for financial institution, if you click on that eight thousand, well, I thought you could. Okay, where can I see my note behind that?
Your note, you have to double click on the description.
Oh, that's right, you have to go over here, the description or the account number?
Either one, just double click on it.
The account number, if you double click on the account number, you can see that there's a note behind there. And what I tried to do is explain to you guys what that is, what that revenue account is, where the money comes from and, and the projection.
Okay.
Then you can go to your previous, I guess we can get back out of here. And then again, the stock insurance, you can see that by that N there, that there's a note behind there. So then you can go to the next one, stock insurance, I try to explain to you what stock insurance was and what statute that comes from, and then again, the request that's in there currently. I don't know exactly, we talked about putting some of those description on the account itself within GL, but since this is our first go around with budget, I just put the note in with the account on budget. And you see the local use tax, and again, there's a note behind it explaining that.
How do you know there's a note behind it?
Um, you see that N there?
Out by the part.
There we go, in front of the number and requested?
Yes.
All right.
Some things I do, some things I don't, um, you know, I tell you whether it's an in out account, so you can see down below what it is. I'll get to a bigger one here, which the carry forward, um, I just, you can see this little attachment over here, this little paper clip to the side, that is also actually a piece of paper that I've attached. And you can see that by looking up to the attachment. And again, this is just me coming up with a way of trying to figure out what the carry forward is. Old fashioned as it is, there it is, so. But it's, it helps you to know that there, you know, where I came up with some of it.
How do you open up your note? Click on that paper clip?
Yep, and then you're in it and then you can go to the attachment right up above, going up here at the top.
Oh, so I gotta open it and then go up to it? Where? Uh, there. Slow down.
Sorry. Believe me, this is all my fault, so.
So the R to the very left is a revenue and the E is an expense?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess you don't even have to look at the account numbers, you're still looking at the fours and the fives. But I, I do wanna show you the, on revenue, did I pass it up? I guess I did. On the, um, the transfer, does that happen? Oh, this, um, no, it's not in the department request, this...
Four hundred eighty-seven thousand?
Yeah.
It's not moved over.
Why did it not come over, I put all those in there. Why is it showing up under the... But you see the breakdown, I put it out there and I'm gonna have the budget, maybe if you put it in as a project, does it show up different, Danielle? She says, I didn't think so, but for some reason it's over here, I don't know how I could've got it...
Did you change that projected amount?
But it's got the note on it instead of over here, it's got a note on it, it doesn't have it in there. I don't know, we'll have to figure that out, why that went there. But again, that at least gives you a visual of what's in that account, you know, the breakdown of all the different funds and where the money's gonna come from. Again, that's a three percent admin fee on new revenue, it's not on carried forward, it's not on anything else, but the total of all that is still right around that four eighty-seven. I have no idea what that meant, shoot, it's hard to get that in there. Okay, we'll figure that out, but, but, um... And you go down through there, if you have any questions about what I put in there, you can let me know on this account. Workers' comp, health insurance, those are all in and out type accounts and auditing service, like the animal shelter. I just went ahead and attached, um, a contract with the city on that where it specifies what the amount is and that we are going to pay the CPI plus that hundred thousand. So anything I could think of and anything you guys wanna see attached, you just let me know. But again, whatever makes it easier, we won't have that drive so much out there anymore, this will be it. This will be everything I could think of to attach to an account, I'm gonna attach it in here. And or I'll write notes in here. The nine one one, um, half here, half, um, EMS, we, EMS sales tax, we can talk about that, you know, what you, what you wanna do there going forward. Communications, obviously our phone stuff here, insurance, property liability, and then it does get spread out to the different funds also. Rob and Ridge Public Works for EMS, law enforcement. Um, you know, and even in, um, MAC, this expense here, before we had, uh, bid mail planning, MAC membership and NACO membership, and that's the estimates of each one, and we put them all together in that account.
Under, what was that under?
That is under this account number, which is, it kinda spells them all out in the account number.
Okay.
But it's kinda hard until you get in it to see which one, each one of the costs.
I see, okay.
And again, these are estimates for next year. Postage, I mean, that's the postage machine here, and then we do bill out some of the departments, not too many, but we do. Contingency, um, I just kinda balance that with carry forward. It's all about how, we don't have all the departments in GR. It's gonna be when the auditor gets done with the budget, will we ever get to see that final picture? 'Cause we won't see the elected officials' budgets within there until November, until you receive it. And I'd like to keep that the same, but, and we do have a little receivership money left still. So, and then, you know, you can close that and you can go back into task and create a budget again and look at a different department. If I was to open all of the departments that are under you, it would give all of them's revenue, all of them's expense, and it's kinda hard to see what they're costing you if you don't bring them up individually.
Okay.
So, I mean, the next one I could bring up, I could put this one back over here and bring up our budget, which is one twenty-two. Put it back over there and just look at that budget. And again, well, we don't make any revenue, we try, there's no revenue for us. So then these are our expenses, um, again, there's not, there's not very many accounts here. So I basically kept it, I actually reduced office supplies, um, I reduced meetings and travel. I did have communications based on the actual expenses, so I put a note there.
So any other elected officials have theirs entered, like LV's, when he gets his entered, we'll be able to go in and look at theirs? We won't be able to change it though, it'll be like read on them.
Until it comes down, until it's rolled down to your level.
So, ooh, coming down to our level.
Or go up charge.
Then they can change any department's budget?
There you go.
Then they can change any department's?
Yes, sir.
Does that notify that department?
Well, when the budget's adopted, yes.
We don't actually change his do, we don't, we change it on...
We, he has a special thing, so we can't change his.
Well, I mean, it's just like when they submit theirs to us, they're gonna know how to change, right?
Well, we, we can't decrease his budget.
Right.
Well, feel free to increase it if you want.
But any changes we make, he's gonna be able to see.
Yes. Well, in this budget, it's a whole module its own, you're gonna see what the department requested, that's the level we're at now with your department, your actual accounts, then it's gonna go to the auditor's office and then it's gonna come back out, down in the level with the commission.
Yeah, whenever we used to get it before, we would have two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen requested, or sixteen requested. And then we had actual...
Which is all those columns, and they're just gonna keep adding columns when it gets to auditor and commission.
Right now we're...
Okay, so we won't be able to change his column, we'll be able to change ours. Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, is how they go back and look at it and say, all right, you know, where'd he change stuff at?
And like even on the...
Increased it.
Even on the bond thing, I went ahead and put that it's for my bond, we shouldn't have any of your guys' bonds this year, but I do get bonded, I don't, just make sure everybody's comfortable, I'm stealing money, so. So again, I didn't go into detail on any of these other accounts, it's kinda hard to know what meetings you guys are all going to or what training, um, options may be available, you know. So, um, one twenty-seven, one twenty-two, you guys are also in charge of one twenty-three, which is not much, we'll go to one twenty-three.
Where's one twenty-three at?
General distribution.
I don't have that on mine, I got one hundred.
It's just the financial in and out.
No, you, you're in the wrong column. You go down one. Go back and then go down one.
Back. Select departments?
Yeah.
Select accounts? Change the general, are we doing commission? You're doing one twenty-three. So do I gotta select that first, one hundred?
No, you don't have to select one hundred, just go down to...
Move one twenty-seven back over.
Move one twenty-seven back over, and then select what?
One twenty-three.
One twenty-three.
I expect you do all that, it's just two accounts, it's just an in and out.
I'm just right there, I get in and out of stuff, so when we're really bored and we wanna go over budgets, since we only do this about nine months out of the year, can't even enjoy our summertime, where we gotta start school again.
And then after one twenty-three, you can put that back over and then you could look at general welfare, which is under you, one forty-three.
Close that out, tell me to close it out. Create a budget, select phone.
And again, I have not filled out anything here except for pauper funerals. Uh, again, you guys, um, whether we get a letter from these people, whether we don't, then we'll just address it when it comes back down in November.
Yeah, we're gonna have to figure out what we wanna do.
Yeah, and I, yeah, Chris, I talked to you guys about maybe doing something different, having a pool of money and then letting them all, put an application for it type thing, it's totally up to you. And here's that civil war project, I know we did years ago, we did some, I don't know if that's the same group or not, we talked about earlier today. All right, so, and again, I didn't put anything in there except for the paupers for right now.
Yeah, and evidently we've, they've spent...
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's Maryland, Maryland. Spots were kinda...
I did up it, we, we had only budgeted, well, twenty-five hundred after twenty-six.
I think one month we had like five of them or some, you know, two month period, kind of something.
So we never know what that is.
No.
And so then let's see what other budget you have, law enforcement, which this is, I don't know, it's always been considered a separate line item just 'cause it was, it's department one sixty-five.
You know you gotta memorize all these departments and numbers, right, Sam?
Storing it up here.
See, he hasn't got past the login screen.
That's all right, I don't know any of these account numbers, go back, Debbie says one forty-three, huh?
Well, then, this is the transfer from GR to the law enforcement fund, I did attach something here, what did I... Well, then, this is the transfer from GR to the law enforcement fund. I did attach something here, what did I attach? Oh, I attached the MAXIMA study, that study showed how much computer services that the sheriff's office should be paying for computer services. So, I just showed you that, because what I did was take the two million forty, based on the two thousand computation that was promised, you know, it's promised, it's not anywhere else. Less the computer services for fourteen, and that's where you come up with the one million nine ninety one. So, again, that's.
Or you'll find it out, when you leave a note.
Um, when you click on it, it will, you can just keep adding all the notes you want. And I don't know if that's the perfect place to do it, but.
I'm sure they just figured it out.
Yeah, right.
If I can see some of this stuff and see where he came up with the numbers, because I would've been looking at that one point nine seven five, so what the heck?
Right.
And then you have on there with the modest computer stuff, so.
Yeah.
So, is there anything that you need us to, to look at today, or?
The biggest thing after that, we won't look at the health insurance fund, if you wanna look at that real quick, it won't.
What departments, or what's fund is that under?
It's Fund six twenty. Okay, if I get the right thing, we'll be alright.
I need to get rid of that department, six twenty.
See, isn't that fine?
I didn't say anything about it being fine.
I didn't either. Six twenty, is it? No, maybe I'm crazy.
No?
Okay, it's Department six twenty then.
Medical Services Cash Forward, I'm already there.
You are?
Health Insurance Funding, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, again, we've talked about this several times, you see the revenue and two expense, you know, we don't get into much detail here, it's all money coming in and money going out, and I got notes here on the insurance revenue, this is payroll deposits from all funds, okay? Just to give you an idea, and that's the medical services, that's the. Now, I don't even know right now. That is out, anybody, that reassurance, insurance, you know, that's a guess, that's a stab in the dark, I don't know how much, how many people are gonna go over that reassurance, fifty thousand, but I did go ahead and budget some. Cash Forward, I'm estimating it one point one, and again, behind there, and show you how I got to that estimate. Oh, I just said estimate, so sorry.
Okay, can you, can you just explain how, I mean, so is the health insurance on the revenue side, is that the money that we're putting in there as what we're charging the employees for health insurance?
That's right.
That's, so that's at five hundred and eighty dollars, yeah, whatever, okay. So, that goes in as a revenue into that fund?
That's right.
Okay, and then, the medical services is the reinsurance?
Is the reinsurance money coming back in?
For claims over fifty thousand.
That's right.
Okay. And so, you've decreased that a bunch, looks like going forward.
I just don't know.
Okay.
What we're, we're at, it just, last year, we actually didn't budget anything. This year, we didn't budget anything.
Okay.
I think we should budget something.
I, I agree.
So, I decided, well, let's just budget that.
Okay.
And then the carry forward, I'd say we're gonna be close to where we were this year, and.
You mean the cash, the cash forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, so, that's where the cash forward's coming back out on the contingency?
Basically, yes. I'm saying hold that in contingency, because I'm estimating the payments that we'll make are two million one.
Okay.
And, you know, if we have a bad year, it could be more than that, you know, you just don't know. So, could have a better year, you know, it's all about, and then the carry forward and contingency will balance itself out, or, you know, I, I know I sent you guys that information on that, and if you wanna get another year under our belt, see where we are, think about maybe changing rates, or, I've got a call in to Joe, I'm trying to get the fixed costs and the admin costs from UMR, and see what they're gonna do for next year, so we can know where we are, if we're staying, if we wanna look at bidding it out, but again, those are minimal costs compared to the actual claims that we have, the fixed cost and the admin cost are. So, probably we wanna keep those in check, too.
So, I guess, as I look at it, I mean, in fourteen, we had two point four coming in under health insurance. Why are we down to two point one? Have we decreased the amount that we're?
What I did was take the average of all the payrolls, and on the, we're about a hundred and eighty eight thousand that we submit up at the end of payroll into this fund every month.
Mm-hmm.
Employees up or down, and that was an amended budget, the actual, so far as this, and that's seven months, that's seven months. And you don't know how many people are gonna take family, and how many people are gonna take dependents, you know, so, it, it could vary.
Mm-hmm. Well, I just, I mean, so as I look at, so I go back and I look at, at fourteen activity, and so, you know, we're setting aside two point four million, our reinsurance is a hundred and thirty three thousand, and then our, our total claims paid out, one point eight roughly, right? So, that shows us a surplus. Right? So, as I go forward, and I just look at, you know, we have some cash forward coming forward in sixteen, but looks like we're spending, if, if your projections are correct, we're gonna spend more than, than we actually put in, in our account. So, you got two point one coming in, you got fifty thousand in medical services, you know, but you got two point one six two, so, I mean, you're actually in the hole.
Well.
I mean, well, you got the interest earned there, too, so, I mean, you're, you're dead even.
Right, yeah.
But how does that continue to grow, that cash forward, so when we have those, you know, those bad years, I mean, hopefully, we have a lot of good years where we come in under, but if we have a bad year and we go over, and that, and that reinsurance kicks in.
Those big ones. If you have a lot of small ones, you know, you're not gonna get that reassurance, reinsurance money. It's all about this figure right here, it's all about where the claims are.
Mm-hmm.
You know, by the time you wrap up, and what I tried to do on those, trying to set your reserve goals, I tried to look at the last three months of the year, that is most definitely the biggest months of the year, that we don't actually pay until January, February, March. A lot of people get their deductibles met, and then they hit it hard, you know, the end of the year, and of course, you don't see those bills till January, February, and March.
So, we have one point one in there currently as our cash forward?
I'm estimating that's what it's gonna be at the end of the year.
At the end of the year.
And we're about one point two right now, but.
Okay.
But we've got, you know, taking into consideration, which isn't bad, I know we have one employee over into reassurance right now, so, last year, we had four by the time you.
Well, I mean, as, as I look at this, I just, my concern is until we have really two years under our belt, and we get through that fifteen months, which gets us out into March of sixteen, you know, the, and, and then it probably'll take longer to actually get the data. So, I mean, we're, we're another six months into sixteen before we really have the data to know where we ended up.
I agree.
You know, then, then if our cash forward continues to grow, and, and we're not hitting too much in that reinsurance, you know, we could look at reducing that, that medical benefit. But, you know, I, I think the bigger thing is, is that even if we don't reduce the medical benefit, it's not going up, and so, that's, that's the great thing, because at, at ten or twenty percent increases, I mean, that cost just grows and grows and grows, and, and that's what we were looking at two years ago, was ten to twenty percent increases.
Every year.
Every year.
So, you're gonna talk to Joe, too, and.
Yeah, and, and right now, we can control that part of it, the usage part of it, you know, then it ultimately is good for the employee, good for the county, that frees up money other places, so, and if you guys want to get into, I know the health department was on the cutting edge of trying to get us health promotion here, if you want to, I, I would assume, we'll have to check with Jill. There's no reason why we couldn't use a little of this money into next year for incentives, for health and wellness stuff, type stuff, but I'm sure that's just a decision you guys would have to make, you know, and it's all about that, you know. Quicker we can, and you see those statistics, which really surprised me, on the, you know, the annual exams that are free to employees, how many of them don't take advantage of those, you know? Okay, it's free, there's no reason not to take it, yeah, I don't like to go to the doctor either, but, you know, it's free, let's do it. Grams, men's testing, if it takes the health department to get involved, to get our employees to do that, so be it, you know.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we have to make people be more active in their, their healthcare, and I mean, and that, you know, it's not just being active in your healthcare when you become sick or you become injured, it's be, being active in your healthcare, you know, from your twenties to.
As you get older, it's more.
Well, yeah, I mean, it, you know, until it slaps you in the face, you know, that's not the time to, to start looking at.
I really don't wanna be seeing Mike professionally.
That's something you guys can think about, if you want me to put a line item in there, or check out if we can use that money, I'm sure we can, it's up to you guys, but. But that, and you can, again, decide by November, we can, when we get the budget back, you can make that decision then. Domestic shelter is just an in and out, you don't need to worry about that. The next big one is EMS sales tax, I mean, I, we can do that one, it's pretty cut, I guess it's Department nine oh one. Yeah. EMS. If you don't mind, I'm gonna bring up another spreadsheet here. I know I had it up before, so where do you think I can get to that now? Capital EMS, I know I, there's a pretty copy of it, too, in there, this might be easier to look at first. What I put in yellow there is Mike's request for two thousand sixteen, is two ambulances, and then he also has in there the vehicle replacement plan that we were talking about every six years for, this happens to be his vehicle. And then he has portable radios in there, he has this radio stuff, and.
Yeah, just zero that out.
Zero that out. And then you have the Lucas CPR compression thing, and then you have the COTS, the, the third phase, or the second phase of the three phases. And then you have the total request down there of five oh six, of what he's requested. I know I did put this little miscellaneous thing here, if I remember, you guys talked to the city about the nine one one, seventy five thousand maybe this year. So, I did go ahead and put that in this year, so I don't know if that's, I haven't had.
Oh, that's, that's for the nine one one upgrades.
Yeah, I put that in there. So, again, these, and this was our long range planning, you know, so these were all spaced out. Again, obviously can't change as we go, but we wanted these big ticket items to be available to us going forward, so we know what we're looking at. Will there be other stuff that comes up along the way? Sure, I'm sure there will. So, you can see the difference in the money, and how some years it goes way up, and that's just because that's how we are, you know, as far as, when we started EMS, we outfitted them, and then we kind of outfitted a lot of stuff at the beginning, and unfortunately, some of that stuff comes through at the same time, so.
So, Mike, I probably asked you this before, but I mean, once we get through some of these Lucas things, and the stretchers, and the COTS, I mean.
It's just hard infrastructure from there, it's.
Right, I mean, so, we've, we've kind of bought all the big ticket things, and then, besides the ambulance upgrades and replacements, so.
And as planned, the first five years of our existence was invest heavily in the hard infrastructure, we've done that last year with the building, dispatch. Now, we're finishing up with the, the COTS, the Lucas devices, the monitors, so that's a lot of the big ticket stuff.
Where do we come in on the remounts, because we're still in the remounts on the ambulance, right?
Yeah, roughly a hundred, right around there.
Okay, so that two hundred's a.
Yeah.
Good, good number, okay.
And you can see right here, the, the, like, last year, eight hundred forty six thousand, this year, five oh six, and then you drop down to three hundred, two, 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 three, and then you go back up.
Oh, that's, you're on a different spreadsheet.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, you're alright.
This one's easier for me to.
That's fine.
Spread out throughout the years, to be on a replacement for each type of vehicle, when the radios would potentially need to be replaced, when the.
That's the long, the long range plan.
Yes.
Okay.
So, we do slow down for a few years here, and then we pick back up here.
Okay.
So, that's giving everything remain the same as it is.
Yeah, that's, you know, five years, could, a lot of things can be different, but for the next two to, two to five, you've got a reasonable expectation of what costs are gonna be.
So, then, then I went and equated that into BSNA, and so, like the sales tax figure, what I, so then, what I have attached there is their two thousand and fourteen tax levy, and you can see a rollback there, and I, for whatever, I took two thousand and fourteen, what we received, and added two percent to it. I know I gave you guys the total at the end of the sales tax yesterday, it actually went down for one month, but we're still up for the year. Now, if you guys don't like the two percent that I've added to the estimated, to estimate revenue, we could take it back down to currently what it's gonna be this year, but we've been, I would say, for the year, up every month, not each month compared to last year, but up for the year.
Year to date.
Yeah.
Don't we just go flat with it usually?
And this year, two thousand fifteen, we actually went up.
I know, but we usually for.
Actual.
We projected it. Just go flat.
Well, we project our ending.
Yeah.
Our annualized.
Add it in, too, this year, if you want.
I'd like doing that.
I'm gonna.
I mean, it's still kind of a projection, because you're, you're trying to project it annualized, but you don't.
Flat is a safe bet, I mean, that's, you know, like you say, year to date, you're up, but month to month, it fluctuates, but staying flat, it, that is a reasonable expectation, I would concur with you.
And that total right there is less than flat, because I took fourteen and added two, instead of using fifteen.
Okay.
So, that's, that's.
The two, seven forty seven, or the five, seven forty seven?
Five seven is actually less than.
Right, than, than actual.
Yeah, than actual, I'm sorry, yeah.
Or an annualized, I mean, it's, it's kind of projecting out. Still, but.
If you guys wanna use current, then when we get there, we'll do that. And again, carry forward is just what I think it will be, and I don't know.
And we'll have those, so, we figure what we take in, and on sales tax, it's what we take in, in the current year. So, we'll have that in December, I mean, it'll, we'll get it the first of December, or the first part of December, but it's actually for November.
That's right.
But also, like, in January, it's for the previous year December.
You're kind of a month behind.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we budget based on a cash basis.
Right, so.
Yeah.
But you still get twelve months in there, yeah, of actual.
And so, there are the expenses, and you talked about that transfer, so I'm just gonna go into that account. That transfer, you see the sixty percent rollback?
Mm-hmm.
And that's what it equates to, and then you see the transfer to the enterprise fund to make them whole.
Mm-hmm.
And then you see the admin fee of three percent, which that amount should've carried over to add one twenty seven, but I don't know, I'll have to check that out with the promise. So, that explains what that four point six is, so much better than what New World could do, and I'll give them that, so, that's the total. I'll give that one. But, and then the same with, oh, there's all of the other expenses, I went ahead and put all of those in there that Mike talked about. And if you go behind here, you will see what that is, two remounts at a hundred and ten each. And you'll also be able to see the attachment that Mike had submitted, so.
Keep in mind, my capital request is a grand total. However, the capital, the way it's broken down, when you see it, ambulance capital is in a separate line.
Right.
That's right, and that's right here, and so, what I did there is I tried to break that down for you, too, is those items that he had requested.
What, what fund were you looking at for that?
It's Department. Um, it's Department nine oh one.
Oh, you're still in nine oh one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you just popped, pulled up a note or something, is that what you did?
Right, if you click on the account number, then you'll be able to see the note behind there.
Just on the sales tax?
Um...
Income?
No, on that expense line item, which is capital, which is...
Oh, I was already there, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought you had said something about the, uh...
The income?
The enterprise fund.
Um, right, in that transfer, you see that transfer expense right there, that four million six hundred? If you click on that one, you'll see that this is the transfer to the enterprise fund. Now, when we get to the enterprise fund...
Are you under capital?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't see that.
You don't see that? It's in that form though. Okay, get off to that one. It's in the transfer, I'm sorry, I keep saying capital, you're in the capital account, aren't you? This one.
Transfer, okay.
So then you'll be able to see that revenue in the, um, enterprise fund. So it's all very clean and, um...
Transparent.
You can see it, it's very transparent, that's why.
Yeah, it's very transparent.
So, again, you, I never told you this, but down at the bottom, obviously, you can see this total revenue is total expense, net, always, revenue has to equal expense, so there's no net here, so...
Plus or minus.
So then, sales tax, if you guys are okay with submitting that to the auditor, then, or if you wanna look at this, and we have another agenda meeting before then, uh, but my biggest one that we have left to do, and the last one we have left to do is sales tax. Um, sales tax is, um, let me bring up another spreadsheet, do I have another spreadsheet? Can't have too many spreadsheets.
Which sales tax are you doing?
Capital.
Okay.
Hard to believe, but sixteen is gonna be the last year of this five-year sales tax. And I know I've had this spreadsheet going since the beginning, and it's from two to sixteen, um, I'm sorry, twelve to sixteen, and it's all the activity that we've done and all the expenditures that we've had. So, at, if you go to column, um, right here, J, which has the actual as of yesterday, or Friday, or whenever, and it is Sunday, uh, this is the money we have in the bank, five hundred thirty-three thousand, okay? Of that, we're still gonna collect, oh, wait a minute, yeah, I'm sorry, five hundred thirty-three is what we brought forward from last year, fifteen, and we've brought in another five seventy-five this year, so far.
Okay.
So we have both of those together. But the column I'd really like you to look at is the, where we're at, at the end of fifteen, is right now, we have six hun-, we have seven hundred and sixty-three thousand right now, okay? And we anticipate getting in another two hundred and seventy-seven thousand of taxes by the end of the year, so we have about a million forty-one by the end of this year.
Okay.
Of that, this is the air conditioner at Juvenile, AC, air conditioner at Pringer. This is the security, I think, that we just signed this morning, countywide security. And then we have the website that you just signed this morning.
Right.
And then we have this eighteen thousand for microfilming, that was promised, that I, if I remember right, from Circuit. And then you have twenty-five thousand left from what, um, we budgeted compared to what Dale has spent, and then I did add an extra, a little bit for BSNA, that's still out there to be paid. And then this is what's still out there on the flyover from GIs.
Okay.
Unless I'm missing anything else, which, what is this, two thousand? Uh, we probably have some tax increment financing still to be paid. I think that's on the, what's that, O'Donoghue's down here. So, um, by the end of the year, with those things paid, we should have four hundred thirty-two thousand to start two thousand sixteen. With that, you'll take in another eight hundred and some thousand, okay?
Is that just the capital improvements portion?
Just the fifteen percent of the capital improvement.
For facilities.
For facilities. Unless some other project comes up between now and then.
We got plenty of projects.
We got windows, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the one I was thinking of.
And that one will probably, well, I don't know, we think lap over the next year paying for it, if we do do...
It's possible.
It's...
And of course, there, we've applied for a grant for some of that.
Yeah, that'd be nice, if we can get some of that up with the courthouse, but it's not gonna pay for the annex windows. We also have receivership funds, but we got half a million left in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, five hundred and eighty.
I think Judge George said she has a hundred and eighty.
That would be something that we need to look at.
And that would, you know, so that gives you an idea of where we've been, where we're at, you know, obviously it helps you plan for renewing, you know, this one would, and, and it would actually help in our long-range planning then too. And then, you know, we go back to this with our buildings, um, and I, I don't know, we should have a list, otherwise I put the list in here, and you guys can access this, uh, under budget, under commission budget, and I put in there for sixteen, everything...
Out on the F-drive?
Yes.
Okay.
Just where the, where it was last year, under sixteen. Um, so I put in there everything Dale has requested, you know, there's his windows, his estimate, I put it in...
Greg.
I'm getting old, I must be thinking about Dale, I don't know, that's bad.
You're good.
Okay, and the part...
Oh, windows could be computers. It's all right, Debbie.
Sorry, yeah, windows, but exterior, you know...
I just, that scared the hell out of me, cause when Dale was asking or telling that his budget might be a little different this year, I did not see a seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on it.
Yeah.
No, he would be very upset if that was the amount. So you see all what Dale has requested.
Greg.
Hey! Oh my God, okay, I'm gonna write that down. I have a brother named Dale, I guess I'm gonna grab one, okay.
Sure, sure his name's not Greg?
No, we're all D's, I can tell you that. So, there's his priority list, and you know, he did As, Bs, Cs, and Bs if they're not priority, so I put those out there for you, whether they're priority or not, and again, then he went to the annex, and he's, he's suggesting these things, and this is his priority list, so... And then, Sallyport, nothing, and then Carnegie Building, depending on what we do there, there's some figures for you. Health Department, and again, depending on what you wanna do there, there's some figures. Pringer, um, I think the big one is that general. And then Shepherd's Building, um, replace the air conditioner in the AC, in the meeting room, and then the heating thing. And then you see the law enforcement, I don't even wanna figure what that's gonna be twenty-five years from now, so, I won't be here, so...
Sure will.
Yeah, public affairs.
Yeah, hover round.
Yeah. Countywide phone system, so, there I did put you some phone stuff in there, but that maybe just be, I had that in there. And I tried to come up with a vehicle replacement schedule for long-term planning, and what I had on there was one for maintenance and one for planning, that's totally up to you guys. And so, if we can afford all of that, we spend two million eight. And what did I say we had? Eight hundred thousand plus... Eight hundred thousand plus four hundred thousand. So what's that?
So you got about three-quarter of a million plus the four hundred you had left over?
So one, two...
So you don't even have enough for half of that?
Twelve plus five, yeah. And of course, all of that wouldn't have to be done right now, but I'm just saying, I just put it there like that.
And what else comes up?
Right.
Cause the windows kinda came out of the blue, we weren't expecting that.
And I have no idea what that is.
Cause we got the courthouse sealed and everything, and supposedly, that was gonna take care of it, and then we find out the windows were put in wrong. How come that happened on both buildings? They weren't both done at the same time, were they? Annex and the courthouse?
We didn't have this building, when we did...
No, that was...
No, that was way before me.
So they were both put in wrong, isn't that what they're saying?
I think Tom Brown was...
Yeah, he was.
But then they say they were both put in wrong? These windows were put in wrong, those were put in wrong?
Mm-hmm.
Those were put in backwards?
Yeah.
This was, well, we added on this top floor, and we added out on both sides, or...
Did you talk to Associated Press then about the legislation to get money on tickets, stuff?
I said it would, it was an interesting option. That's all I told her. Yeah, I did tell her. I said it's just, it's...
That's ridiculous.
It's an interesting option.
And I started full-time.
If, don't they already assign court costs and fines to the tickets? That should pay for the court itself. I'm not voting for it, to that much.
It's not gonna right now, like, well, the governor beat it, so it's, it's a moot point. That was the whole thing.
If legislation, if legislators wanna do it, then they can put the tax on it.
Yeah, it's a moot, it's, it's...
So Chris, I just wanted to know that whole thing about the buildings and what Dale had submitted.
Yeah, she didn't wait for you. It's fine.
Greg, God, what Greg had submitted, I'm, I'm having Alzheimer's today. So, if you do everything Greg submitted, and you leave that two hundred thousand in there for phone, computer stuff, and you do a replacement plan on the vehicles, you're looking at two million eight with only, uh, twelve...
Is that in sixteen?
Point five, yes. That's doing everything, but again, that wouldn't be a smart thing to do either, because we wanna stagger some of this stuff, you know, we want, we wanna be able to afford it fifteen years, when these things all are gonna be replacing.
But I mean, so one of the big things that's probably in there is the windows.
Yes.
And so, once we knock the windows out, now we free up a lot of money to do others things, right?
Depending on if you wanna use that reserve in GR, um, the windows, both buildings, would probably take up, assuming on this estimate, will take up more than the sales tax we're gonna bring in next year. So then we would have to use the reserve out of GR, and we'd have to use the receivership to do anything else.
Right. But, you know, I mean, so, so the downside to that is, by not doing anything, we're deteriorating our building even further, that we've spent three hundred and some odd thousand dollars in ceiling and, you know, roof and new gutters and all, I mean, so we've spent all this money and we, by not getting the windows fixed, we're just, I mean, it's like we're going backwards.
And you guys are doing the right things, I mean, there's no, you know, there's some buildings that are in question, you know, and you guys are standing still on those till the questions are answered, so...
So...
So I just wanted you to see that, within B, within the software system, I have not plugged anything in to the budget for sales tax. All right, you just tell me if you want me to plug some figures in there and let it go to the auditor, and we then have time between now and then for you guys to figure out exactly what your plans are, and, and again, the plans with capital change, Dale, I mean, you guys probably won't know what you're gonna do till we have the building on the windows.
That's twenty-eight, yeah.
So, and again, in sales tax, I have not plugged, I don't think so, I've not plugged anything, or any R expenses, assuming that you guys wanna talk about it, think about it, or... Or we can technically send it up to the auditor's office blank, they can submit a budget in there, and then they can go forward with their budget, but we've never done that, I've usually given up something, and then...
Man, I'm okay with you filling it in, or just putting something in there as a placeholder, I, I mean, that's all that it is, until we get really down in the, in the weeds on it, um, you know, I guess my question, maybe it was more for Greg, but, you know, of that two-point-eight million, you know, I'm just wondering, does that include a new roof at Carnegie? Does that include a new heating and cooling system for the courthouse? You know, I mean, just, I'm just thinking of some big-ticket items there that, that are gonna need to be addressed, and, um, you know, I know the, the Pringer HBAC was a big one.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it came in more than what we thought, and so, you know, I'm concerned as, you know, we look at these big-ticket items, and we're always gonna have the small items, you know, we can, we can eat those fifty thousand dollar items pretty easily, but, um, but those four hundred and five hundred thousand dollar items, and that seven hundred thousand dollar windows, those are, those are hard ones to, to knock off the list.
And just like capital and EMS, this capital, you know, the totals at the bottom, when I can take that windows, and I can hopefully put that windows out for another couple of windows left.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we won't see that again for quite some years.
Sure.
But there'll be other things that come up, but yes, as far as the Carnegie Building, he did have the, the, um, re-tucking and windows in there. Oh, you said roof.
Yeah, he's got a hundred thousand for roof.
Roof and...
I'm not sure that I'd get it, but what about the courthouse and the heating and cooling system?
He has four hundred thousand in it.
Okay. Okay.
And I didn't know which place to put that in, so...
Sure, that, that's fine.
Is that all of it? So we're all in together?
Well, so like, I mean, we just got a new air conditioner out of Health, because they're shot crap, so, I mean, you know, besides, besides looking at, at space for other people, um, you know, that's...
He did have a little bit of stuff in there for the health building, but again, this is all subject to whatever you guys do.
So, anyway, it's a...
Some for Pringer, I guess, Pringer generator, so, yeah. Okay, well, I will go ahead and put some figures in there, I'll give you guys an email telling you it's all out there for you guys to look at, any notes, and then I'll wait till the last day, and I'll send it up to the auditor's office, so she'll be able to know that it's done.
Okay.
Um, if you guys have any questions from now to then, or having concerns about what I have in there, just let me know.
Okay. I only, I only had a couple little things.
Okay.
So under one twenty-seven and, and economic development, is there a way that you can put some more notes or categorize that as to what's going where?
Do you want me to put what we were doing this year out there, or...
Yeah, just so where you're getting, you know, those, so I think there was three hundred thousand dollars out there total, or something, under ED. Now, I know a lot of different things fell under that, so I'd just like to be able to see that, and then...
That's the chamber contracts under that too, right?
Yes.
Should, should be, yeah.
That's why, that's so big, otherwise we're gonna lay it about fifty.
Yeah, well, I thought we had done two hundred, but we also took some of those things that were in general welfare, and we put them into, like, Salute fell under, um, ED, and, and I think there were some others too.
Yep.
Then also under one twenty-seven, I saw it, in fourteen, we did household hazardous waste, are we not doing that anymore, or...
Well, at the beginning of it, it was a grant with the city, and so, um, then we made an agreement with the city for three years, I think it was, to pay them about the same amount as a grant was, but Christian didn't want it in the grant line anymore, so it's falling up there under miscellaneous. So I, I'll put that in the note for miscellaneous.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll, well, I could put that in the note of that account too, cause I did the same thing, I'm like, where is that? But it was because it wasn't a grant anymore, that she didn't wanna show up in a grant line.
Okay.
It was just an agreement with the city.
All right. So I had...
The first five years were paid for out of the grant.
Was it five?
I think it was five, it was a certain amount that we had to put in each year, the first year they paid for them big pods and stuff, you been out there before?
I have not, I've sent my guys down there.
There's people out there at the time, it's crazy. I mean, we got, I got people, well, actually, you mentioned the tire collection too, so we're working on trying to get one of those, we're actually wanting to do an E-waste, maybe in Jeff City, and then one out in the county too, those are fairly well attended too.
It's just hard to find places to go with a lot of those things, um...
It's a good thing for the county too, cause it keeps them from throwing it in the ditches, It's a good thing for the county too, 'cause it keeps them from throwing it in the ditches, and then we gotta go pick them up, and then we gotta get rid of them anyway, so, we're, we're gonna try to get another one of those, but that HHW has been a, I think that's been a good thing, so.
Yeah, I'll put that, I'll write that in there, anything I could think of, or you guys see an account we're working on about, just let me know, I'm trying to attach a copy of the agreement, trying to do something.
It's fine, no, I, I think for the most part, it looks good, is there, is there a way for us to go in there and attach a note or just some comments on that too?
You got full access to that too, so you can, you know, where that note was, you can double-click and you can get another line, and you can write it down.
Okay, okay.
If you put a dollar amount in there, then it will add to the budget, which is okay, if that's what you wanna do.
Right, okay.
Have we got closed session yet today?
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
I'm done.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope. All right.
So then we just need a motion to go into closed session, or you got something else?
Nope, I got nothing.
All right, I'll make a motion and go into closed session, present section six-ten point oh two one.
Sub three?
Whatever it is.
Second.
I'm good enough with six-ten oh two one.
Aye.
Six-ten oh two one's good enough for me.
All right, I gotta get rid of some coffee.
Again, Jeff found an error, then you all, if you don't mind, you all signed him, but then I have space.
I just feel like, I just feel like I'm picking, but somebody ever sees that.